All right, I think we're ready to get started if everyone will stand. Mr. Ed, please.
Father, we thank you right now for this hour. We thank you for this opportunity and we bless your holy name for your goodness and your mercy. We thank you for what you have done thus far and we thank you for what you're going to do for us in the future. For now, as we come to make the best decision for our citizens, we ask that you be with us. Father, we thank you. Love you, Father, for your goodness again. Father, we ask you to take care of the water and the country. Father, bless us in our, in our strife that we have in this country. Thank you and we ask your blessing upon us. Father, we know that we all can get along, we can do good. And Father, we ask your continued blessing. As we go from one good degree to another. And we thank you for these blessings. These blessings and all other blessings we ask right now. In Jesus' name I pray.
Let the angels give life to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting this Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, 5:00 p.m. We have a conference line set up over there at 1-917-900-1022. Access code is 32347-PAL. This is not a small free number and you may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. When the chairperson opens the meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. The moderator will unmute your line as your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last one listed to the telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item, we give a three minutes for comment. A commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. And with that said, we will move on to item three. Did everyone see the additions to the agenda that we? Have a motion to approve. A motion and a second to approve. I would like to say before we go to the next item of all the commissioners, just so everyone can hear. Make sure your mics are pulled in a little closer. So just make sure that everyone can hear, we just pull their mics a little closer. We'll move on to item three, awards recognition, 3A. The board to recognize the 2024 Forest Festival Royal.
We do have a resolution if you want to approve that or however you want to do it.
Okay, so we do have a resolution in place. Do we have a motion to read a resolution? A motion to read a resolution by time of? Senator Feingold? I don't believe you want to get it.
I don't have it.
I apologize, it was last minute.
All right, we have a motion to read a resolution by time of only in a second, a favor?
That's a proclamation. Go ahead and read it.
Yes.
Proclamation, Florida Forest Festival. Whereas October 20th, 24th marks the 69th anniversary of the Florida Forest Festival in Taylor County, Florida. And whereas in 1956, the citizens of Taylor County, Florida decided to stage a countywide pine tree festival as an educational tool to reduce forest fires that were crippling the county's economic base, the timber industry. Whereas over the years, the festival proved and accomplished its aim so well that by 1965, Taylor County could boast the lowest fire record in the nation. And whereas in 1965, Taylor County was the top producing county in the South. And then Florida Governor Hayden Burns and the Florida Cabinet proclaimed Taylor County the tree capital of the South. And at the urging of Governor Burns, the Pine Tree Festival became the Florida Forest Festival. And whereas the goal of the Forest Festival became and remains that of promoting benefits of forestry in Florida. And whereas special activities would have normally been planned throughout the month of October to celebrate the occasion had it not been for the damage sustained from Hurricane Helene. Whereas regardless of the cancellation of the festival, the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners would like to declare the month of October 2024 as Florida Festival, Forest Festival month, and recognize the 2024 Florida Forest Festival royalty passed in regular session this 22nd day of October 2024.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Feingold in a second. Thank you, by Commissioner Mudd, y'all in favor? Want to get a picture? All right.
Well, I'm gonna not hook this in.
And hey, when you're?
Want to get a picture?
All come down here. Y'all are so cute. Are y'all kidding me? Okay, one, two, three, say cheese. One more time. Very good, thank you.
That's the fun part of the job.
All right, we'll move to our consent items of every one of the tenants that are sitting. Consent items, any questions, discussion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Feingold in a second. Thank you, by Commissioner Mudd, y'all in favor? All right, we'll move to item 15, public requests. Commander Michael Thrive to discuss VFW post 9225 request for support.
Good evening, y'all. My mom has given me one to see something as much of them up here lately. The salute to veterans was a big, big success. We helped 307 veterans and we're actually, we're gonna try to do it again this coming year in November. And we're asking for y'all to help us support that again if you have the funds available. Like I said, it went over fantastic. You know, we helped a lot of veterans, a lot of veterans, family members made sure they ate good. They got medical doctors, dental vision, you know, everything that they needed, all free of charge. They're trying to help out especially with everything going on in this world today. And just the next thing I want to talk to y'all about, we've already gotten with the city about it. We're trying to find a permanent home for our post because we don't have one no more. We lost it, that's underwater on the bridge. But the thing is, we've gotten back, I guess you call it an epiphany. We can't serve God and our country if we're slinging booze. So we want our post to be, we want it somewhere where people can come, bring their children, play foosball, shoot a game pool, drink a soda pop, eat a candy bar, and just have fun with their kids where you don't have to worry about a bunch of people being drunk or a bunch of people showing out. And that's what we've gotten really back into is we want to stay a pillar in this community. And we're asking for y'all's help to do that. That'll also help us with our fundraising because right now we're jumping here and there and everywhere, you know, trying to be fundraising. And especially with this hurricane, right now we bumping into each other going whether we're coming or going. And like I said, we really, really use y'all's help if y'all can help us find a permanent home either in the county or the city limits. Like I said, there's not going to be any alcohol, any drugs, that will not be tolerated at all. We have some place where people can come to their families and churches can come, Baptist church, whatever, look at the uniforms and learn about our history, American history through the military. We can have a little museum going back to the beginning. That's during the season, let y'all have some questions for us.
Well, we're looking at a request for $7,500 for this event. And that's something similar to what we've done.
Y'all did five along the last.
We're looking for, of course, the four capitol hall wave out fees.
Ms. Pimpin gave you the number, who to call and talk to about that. So yeah, we want to do that as well. Get the area, you know, more checks, more people get out there. You know, have more, whether it's the units, medical units and stuff, and more places than parks. So not tripping over each body or anybody who's coming all offices. Any questions?
So the event that you're speaking of for November, is this again where you have the doctors and checkups? And when was your last one?
The last one was in September. It's gonna be an annual event every year.
Has it been that long?
No, it's been the last month, but we're scheduled for next year in November.
Not next month, but next year.
Next year, 2025, on November 6th and 7th. And since we did the same thing, you know, doctors, dentists, optometrists.
How many attendees did you have?
We had 307 at the last one.
Wow, and so let me just ask you a couple of questions. Can the VA help support that? Have you reached out to Veterans Administration to see?
They will help by group, they'll have the Vet Center come out to us. They'll have suicide prevention, suicide awareness. And we wound up having to get the state BSO to come out there because our BSO didn't show up and did not call us, nothing, just let us hang and dry.
So do you have to pay the doctors that come or they do it for free?
It all depends. This year we had a guy do it here because we had to pay him. If we can get the VA, they'll provide it for free. You know, if we get them to do the medical dental vision, they'll be back for free. If we can get them, this year we, it was a, a lot of wires got crossed. People weren't wanting to cooperate with us. So yeah, usually we can get them to provide the services for free. As far as medical dental vision, anything like that, but we still have to supply all the other things.
So have you talked with our VA officer, our local officer to see if he can help with getting some of these people involved where it won't cost anything?
No ma'am, because like I said, he was supposed to show up to our event and he never showed up. He never even called us and said he wasn't coming.
We have another one since then though, don't we?
Damien Walker.
No, that's our current, that's our current BSO officer. It was my understanding that he did go and help a few veterans. So we can follow up with you.
No ma'am, we did not.
On another day after I've had an opportunity.
All these guys are my vet post numbers right here.
Well, this isn't really the, I mean, yeah. I just don't know if it was this one or if it was in transition between the one before.
No, it was Damien Walker that was supposed to come up and he never showed up. And he never called us, let's do what happened, white dude show up. That's not a reason over there because that's not the reason we're here.
So this is an event for a year from November, is that?
Yes, sir.
And your request is, I'm seeing third.
Third, yes, and that gives us time to pay for anything we gotta pay for. You know, we gotta get the catering, we gotta get the shirts.
Could you, could you allow us to get through our budget session through July? Would that, would that cut you out in another month? Would help us get to budget season and see where we're at, see what we can do. Would that be?
That's feasible.
I mean, that way we can kind of see what options are there and not shortchange it if we're able.
Yeah, you can give it that.
Sam, are you saying wait until next July?
Well, I mean, if it's gonna be that far out, then that way we'd be closer to be able to see what opportunities may be there.
Coming back again?
Does that give? No, sir, we could just schedule it for our budget workshops. I'm not saying you gotta come back, but it must be able to look at something that's a bit more current and accurate, not so far out.
If you're trying to.
Yes, sir, because there's a lot of work involved in this one, and it's a lot of work.
I support y'all, I always supported y'all and I'll continue to support you. If, if everybody wants to wait and support, that's how I would do this and what would you? I would talk with our VA service officer, you know, and just try to get him involved. And we wonder would you help with that? And you know, if there's any bridges that's been burned or whatever, let's try to, you know, have a good relationship with him. See what he can help.
We got a, we got a medical center out there. You get, you align those people, do you?
The VA clinic here, some of them came out and helped us.
Okay. And you also was talking about a permanent home, you looking for, do you?
Yes, sir, because we're tired of jumping from spot to spot.
Okay, what have you found so far?
Nothing yet because we don't know what's available. I mean, every place we've looked at, the people that own it, they're wanting $2,500, $3,000 per month. We're a nonprofit, that's pretty much our budget for the year. Everything we, everything we take in goes right back out, especially a situation like these hurricanes. I mean, we've, as soon as we get it, we're going, it's going right back out, help with these. Just something, you know, big enough for us to have our fundraisers. Have a place for people to come to their families and hang out and maybe learn some history and get to know some of our veterans. I want to just, what's, I'm trying to think of. Let me use this to know some people that should be their role models, not some football player, some basketball player. Some real hometown heroes.
Have you checked with the old Bellegasmore School? Is there not anything available there? I know at one time.
No ma'am, I'm the vice president of the board over there, they have nothing.
None of those rooms are suitable?
No ma'am, they're.
Can't be fixed or?
No ma'am, about 80% of that needs to be tore down.
Have you reached out to any of the civic clubs and just kind of told your story to let everybody know so everybody can be looking for them a place?
We got people looking, I spoke with a couple managers of the Masons. I haven't gotten any response from them. We had a guy talk to the American Legion. They're kind of in the same boat we're in, Jim Day. Talk to anybody, everybody's good, you know, even friends of mine that are trying to help us find a place.
Now, I know a long time ago, when we were doing the Veterans Memorial Park down here. The VFW, the American Legion met at the same building over there by the cemetery.
Yes, sir.
And so that can't be shared again?
No ma'am, the old KFW and the American Legion, they had some inner workings that did not work. So, and they have, they certain alcohol and stuff over there and we don't want no part of that. That's to my understanding. I don't know for sure enough, but we don't want anywhere around alcohol.
I'll support you when that comes.
Yeah, so Commander Thrive, the last item, I know you guys kept the receipts from that, but we need to still get those. Sorry, I'm the court master. I thought I'd sent, I'd emailed them out.
I'll double check.
And I'll get them out, they've been, by tomorrow.
Our corrections, we're looking at, waiting till our budget season. That's another part of it, but what about the, what are you gonna do? What do you expect us to do to the housing?
Like I talked to the city, they said the city and county both own buildings. I mean, we can afford to pay some rent, but we just can't afford nothing outrageous. And I don't know what the city or the county has in their possession that they can work with us on. We've got $3,000.
Look, I don't know.
How much footage?
About $3,000.
Yeah, about $3,000.
There on Dixie Highway, I'm not sure if that's something available or how to get in touch. I mean, it seems to be pretty vacant. I don't know, I'm just thinking.
That's a good place.
Just thinking out loud, but just maybe we'll give you the location. Maybe it's just not, it's not, it's not down here, but maybe.
We can research it and see who it belongs to, that won't take 15 minutes. And I, I could email you the information.
Mama, do we have anything? Nothing?
As far as any financial support, is that where we're going to wait until our budget season or?
Well, I think the first step is to get the receipts, which I'll search my email to make, I could have missed it, been busy.
Well, I'll follow up through the.
And then.
It may be very well projected, so.
Get those to the board and then as long as that all balances out, then reconsider during budget workshops. Is that what you wish to do?
If I did workshop, I understand that's a long way away, maybe these guys are trying to plan, I'm not sure. If that's the will of the board, that's what we do.
As far as I'm concerned, I would be willing to go ahead and pledge because after next year, we probably wouldn't, really may not have it after next year.
Feel on the same line with you, I mean, even if we did the same amount as we did last year and if we see in the budget session we can do more, then I'd be in favor of that.
So are you in favor of pledging the $3,500 now?
I just said the same as we did last year and I'm saying if we do the same as we did last year, then if we can do more in our budget session, then we do so.
Okay.
And that would be contention upon receiving the receipts from current year.
Okay, so.
All right, so I think the money they're requesting, they're gonna want it to be expensed out of this year's budget. Because if they're gonna need it in July or August, that'd be, that is still be in this year, it won't be again. Because the next year won't start until October 1st next year, so I just wanted to make sure we.
So even next year's budget season, I mean, really, it's not gonna go into effect until October 1st.
They're gonna probably want the money before.
They're gonna want the money before October 1st. So I mean, if we even went to the budget season and say we could do $2,500 more, then I'm gonna give it until October 1st.
So here's where I'm at, you know? Our veterans have sacrificed for us. And I've spoke about this a lot of times, they've given up their times, many have given their lives. Their families have suffered along with, you know, with them being gone and active duty and everything. And so I appreciate what y'all have done for me and for our country. So I'm gonna make a motion then.
And I'll second it.
That we allocate $5,000 now. And then if we can do more, we will, but for right now, $5,000.
Reserve contingency, can you?
And if you need a fund receipt, you can.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, we have a second. Senator Feingold, a favor? All right, we'll move on to constitutional officers, other governmental units, item 16. The board to consider approval of budget amendment number four and transfer for contingency for the Taylor County Sheriff's Office attended by Sheriff Wayne Patchett.
Yes, sir, I mean, that's just the overtime that we have incurred from the two hurricanes, Debbie and Helene. And it's already fell over into this budget year, so that's how much shorter we would be. That's why we're going ahead and asking to have the funds transferred back over.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second to approve, a favor?
Thank you.
Lose additional funds, we could ask for reimbursement on the.
It'll actually be much more than that, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. When we coded it, I think it was like around 220,000 for us. We're just asking for the overtime for that part of the year. So it'll be a much more higher return for people.
But it's all eligible for reimbursement?
Yes, it's already coded for that.
And we do all the 214 forms and everything that are required for you to.
Move on to 16A over on the additions, general business. The board to follow up on always 12, 2024, board to set up an issue, prop the honors, agenda by Commissioner Feingold.
I put this on the agenda because I have these people reaching out to me, they were here before, telling me that I'm needed. And at that time, by consent, the. And at that time, the, by consent, the board, uh, and I went back and looked at the minutes, I decided to go ahead and, and, and do what we could to make provisions for them. So I asked for it to be put back on the agenda for tonight. In the meantime, um, Mr. Owens called me today and, uh, spoke about coming up to talk with Lomond, and I said, sure, go, go talk to her, so he came up. And, uh, he was given the go-ahead to go ahead and sell his property, he's had a buyer for all these months. And they've been patiently waiting, so thank goodness they waited, and so he was told that he could go ahead and, and sell his property. I'm just wondering, oh, and I understand, my understanding is that, that this has been, that this was resolved several months ago. And so I guess my question is, if it was resolved several months ago, why would they have been sitting on this for these months, Lomond, and nobody knew anything about it until it was put on the agenda, and he came up here to find out today, oh yeah, this has already, already been resolved, you can go ahead and sell your property, what happened?
My understanding is that this was, this was resolved with either his father or his grandfather, which I was not aware of. I, and, and this particular application for amendment to the LDRs is for a different land, land class, or a different zoning type area. So I, I was not aware of everything that had gone on behind the scenes with him, and when Commissioner Feigl asked me about him in particular, I started digging into it, as I said I would. And when I backtracked everything, my understanding was, it was not explained to him, but it was resolved with his, whoever the, whomever the owner of the property was, where there was subdivision. So I didn't realize until I dug into it, and I hated that this wasn't communicated. But I, I did not realize that it had been resolved until I took the time to, to step it all back.
Who in our group would have known it was off, or who would have known on our, on our side?
I think Kenneth is the one that resolved it, uh, he looked back and found out that this could happen. And then I know today, when Mr. Owens came up here, he said that Bobby Johnson was in the midst of looking at the paperwork at that, at that very moment. He said that Lomond had asked him to check into this, and so when he walked in, Mr. Johnson was looking into it, he says, what a coincidence, you come in, I'm looking at this now, and I think that you're okay. But I know that his father and grandfather had been deceased for a, a long time, so I don't know who was, who was talked to, but the bottom line is, I'm just glad that, um, that he can sell his property and that he still has a buyer, I just hate that we took these people through months of agony when it was already settled. Now, the other issue is that there's another, um, person over on, um, between Johnson's Strickland Road and Morgan Whitten Road, and these folks were here, they sold their home down south, they sold everything in their home, they came up, they bought this piece of property, only to find out that they, they can't build a house on it, so there they are without a home or anything. So what have we done since that last meeting to try to resolve this issue?
I would like to speak to the situation with Mr. Owens, that when I started digging into it, this is the difference, the, the property was under someone else's name. So I did not make the connection at the time that it was the same parcel. And I hated that he went through months of agony, but I had no idea that it was because of the way the description was. Now, about the other property owner, that is a totally separate issue. It, but it is, it centers around subdivision of property. And in that parent parcel, as we went through in August, it was divided too many times. And not only that, but this particular parcel is not eligible for any type of building permit because it does not have access. It does not have road access, which is one of the requirements of subdividing property. So in, in order to make that even happen in that land use category, it would take a comp plan amendment. Now, what I did is, after the August meeting, I sent a draft application for amendment to the Taylor County Land Development Regulations, along with an email explaining what we were facing, to the Regional Planning Council. I followed up with them several weeks later and asked them for a status, I sent them a copy of the draft, um, the draft application, which would allow easements, twenty-foot easements, but only in agricultural use zone property, because that is more consistent with our comprehensive plan. So with the hope that that is something that would maybe be allowed, since we do allow for family splits within ag use property. But I don't believe that is going to solve this particular family's problem, because they are in a mixed use, I think a mixed use rural residential, um, land use classification. And easements in that land use classification are not consistent with a comprehensive plan. So if the Regional Planning Council, upon review of our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations, feels like this is even something that is doable, then there's a process you have to go through, through that, and ultimately, you have to receive approval from the state. So it's not something that can be resolved on a local level, unfortunately.
So when you got talked last week, Lomond, you said that they had told you, when you reached out to them pretty soon after our meeting in August.
Yes.
And told you that, that they'd have an answer in about three weeks.
Correct.
So I asked you last week to check on that, and, um, have you heard anything back from them? So they're not answering, uh, they're not responding to us, in my opinion, in a timely manner. You've got people that have sold their home and everything in it, and, and this needs to be done, whether it's, and, and I don't really need, stay where we need them, they're not helping us anyway. But I think that this board needs to take action to fix this. And Commissioner Feigl, don't you have somebody in your district that's kind of in the same situation?
I do, but the thing is, you're looking up a can of worms if you start giving, if one piece of property is divided up, you'll end up with a mess. And that's the reason they have a plan in place to try to control that, and that's, that's the reason they have that. And, uh, I mean, they can, there's a way they can do it, they can go back to all the other landowners that's been split up to, and all of them can sign some kind of affidavit to bring it all back together, but it takes all the landowners in that particular area.
So there is a solution.
Mr. Bobby told me, he can, he can explain it, I mean, it's beyond me knowing exactly what all takes place, but Mr. Bobby said there is a way to go back and get all of it, if you can line up all the people that it was split up to, you know, each individual, and get them to sign some paperwork, there is a way to do it. But now it's some, they like to work with Mr. Bobby on that.
Well, I'll, I'll reach out to them and get them to get in touch with him then, because, I mean, I just think it's, it's a shame that people have property they can't, they can't build a house on.
There are some people that's got property that's been split so many times and people have died and beat it over to the grand young'uns or young'uns and, or grandmas, and it, it, it turns into a complete mess. And Mr. Bobby explained it all to me when I was questioning about these property on the bucket road down there that people couldn't build on. And they'd already cleared the land, had it already to build a home on, and it wasn't, it wasn't qualified, but there's a way around it.
Well, Mr. Chairperson, with, when you have this particular property I'm thinking of, when it's already been subdivided, even if you join it all back together, you have to follow the subdivision process, and that's something that's laid out by the state of Florida, and.
Yeah, two-one-seventy-seven.
Yes, sir. So even if it's all joined back together, I don't, then they would have to turn around and go through the subdivision process. And I don't know if that's feasible for every, for every landowner, especially when you have all of these, all of these, um, lot splits, especially in a mixed use rural residential, um, land use category, and not in ag, where it's, where it's doable. I mean, it's allowable in ag, but only for family members. So it's, either way you look at it, I think it's a very complicated process.
Does that mean that we don't pursue, we throw the hat out, or do we try to help these people?
I wasn't suggesting that we don't pursue it, I, I just said that it would be difficult. I, I am, I mean, and I understand that we have not received a timely response, but I think the original discussion was that we would see if this was feasible for the agricultural zone properties, or the land use categories, and then try, see if it's feasible to pursue something similar for other land use categories. Do, do you recall that, Conrad?
Well, I do, we had a meeting in my office with regard to that.
Yes.
And then the last thing that I heard was that, um, Bobby said that he was gonna try and handle it, you'll recall, as he walked out of my library. Uh, but we, again, uh, with respect to, uh, the Regional Planning Council, it doesn't surprise me that, uh, you don't get an answer right away at all.
No.
We, I think, our contract with them for twelve thousand dollars a year, uh, I'm not trying to protect them in any way, but they do represent a lot of counties, and they get a lot of things, and, uh, I personally would rather them come quickly and say, you can't do it without an amendment, or not just hang, have us hanging there. So I'd request that we get ahold of them and say, look, you know, you need a yes or a no, or maybe as quickly as possible.
And, and you know, the other thing, is if our county administrator reaches out to them, and eight days later, they have still not even given her the courtesy to return her call, something's wrong with that. At least you can make a phone call, I, I can't believe they're so busy, they couldn't make a phone call.
Well, I'm not trying to protect them.
We're talking about Scott Coon and that planning council with, I'm gonna refer tonight, there's something I can tell them to step up on in the game or something. And we've had a lot of things that happened in the last four months, last thirteen months, by George, and I can understand things slipping through the cracks. And, but now, some of this stuff is caused by, not caused by the county administrator, it's caused by the people themselves that own this stuff. Now, that man that sold his land down there in South Florida, wherever it was, come up here to build a house without having, to have it all and all the TV that. We can't blame it all on our people, we got to blame it where the blame supposed to be, on the one that's trying to do, and the one that's guilty. Well, it starts with the realtors. But now, let me tell you this, if there's a way to do it, we need to find a way to do it to help, that's our calculus to help out constituents. Everyone out on the bucket road is still hanging, you know?
And Commissioner, I'm, I'm not blaming any, anyone.
Yeah.
It's a very unfortunate situation that these people are in, and I don't know whose fault, I don't know if you blame the landowner, you blame the realtor, or you blame the person themselves, but I mean, I would probably, if I went somewhere, I mean, I know, I know better now, but ten or fifteen years ago, I wouldn't know any better, if I, if I wanted to buy something and it was for sale, I probably, I wouldn't know to check into all of this stuff, so.
Yeah.
What happens is, is the realtor gonna get their commission if they can build on them or not. So they gonna push to sell that piece of property, or somebody buy that piece of property, but I mean, they're not gonna go to Bobby and, and say, well, can this gentleman build on this piece of property? They gonna go ahead and work hard as they can to have a closing to get their check. And it happens all the time, I've seen it down at the beach several times, people go, you know, realtor's selling piece of property, you know, tell them this, tell them that, but the realtor, he's not liable, in a way. I mean, that's just way more than that, so the people got to be aware, you got to be aware of what you're doing when you buy a piece of property, or because there's so many rules, if you, if they had have come talk to Mr. Bobby first, they would never bought the property.
Or if they had done some title work.
That's right.
Well, they should have hired a lawyer.
That's true, they set up where they have to hire a lawyer.
I'm telling you, that's where we're getting to, because, I mean, the average person just doesn't know, I think, to, to do these things and to do their due diligence, they don't know that.
There's an old saying, uh, it's a Latin term, the doctorum cogitem tor, the buyer beware. Of course, that comes when you buy a car, you know? But, uh, it's unfortunate, but, uh, a lot of times we learn by doing, don't we? And, you know, I don't know what the people were paying for the property, you know, I have no idea, but if it's quite a sum, then rationally, you would check it out, you wouldn't let that money go without checking it out. Now, if they were borrowing the money to purchase this property and they went to the bank, the bank would require them to get title insurance, you know, but it's probably, I'm just supposing, and we, I suppose to suppose, but I'm supposing they sold their place, they had some cash and they bought it, without vetting it, the property. And, again, I would say, I'm not trying to reject Regional Planning Council, but, you know, we need to know something from them. You need me to help you try and get Scott to answer that?
Why don't I just give Commissioner Demp's a copy of my emails, and can you carry it with you Thursday?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
We can talk.
I agree, I mean, the, the, I understood concept of these rules back, maybe whenever they were put in place, but I mean, things evolve, we use change, and what, I think we've said it before, is what worked then may not work now. So, and I can tell you the dynamics of our entire town.
Well, what happened, is about, what happened is that the state passed these statutes that we had to have a comp plan, okay? And what happened a lot of times with regard to that, we got a grant to do the comp plan, and we got a cookie cutter. Cookie cutter comp plan that a lot of the folks in North Florida got, it was all, that's, that's what happened. And so we've had to deal with that for the last twenty-something years. A lot of times the legislature passes things, and they don't consider what it, how it would affect the small counties. Okay, because all, the whole thing is to keep from urban sprawl, sprawl, that's, that's what this, this was, and of course, they're having it down yonder, down south, but it's, uh, it, they, they pass these things, and it's caused, uh, we're not the only ones, believe me. So, um, if I can help, let me know.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm, that I'm clear, okay? So what you're saying then is, is they have this cookie cutter plan, and then they present it to Taylor County, and is Taylor County required to?
Have one, yes.
Adopt that.
Yes.
So if we don't have a space so minute, they shove it down our throat.
Well, that's what happened, that we, uh, and of course, no one knew what a comp plan was when they came to tell us what a comp plan was, you know? That's, that's true, that's true.
But since that time, we, we can make text amendments to the comp plan. Yes, there is a process to change that, and there are certain mandated changes that are, that we, you know, that we have to go through every few years. And so we are going through that process now of, well, Regional Planning Council is going through the process now of helping us with this, this. is going through the process now of helping us with this, the statutorily required comp text amendments. But if we wish to make an amendment to our comp plan, we can as well. And so this may be something that the board wants to look at, but, you know, something else you have to take into consideration is how it affects your future land use map, which for the most part, now Conrad helped me out with this, that has been fairly effective, hasn't it? Right. So I, I think in general, the comp plan and the future land use map works for us because it, it clusters your development so people can get goods and services and they have access to infrastructure.
Well, yeah, and it's kept us from having landlocked lots.
Right.
You know, where the fire truck can get there.
Right.
And the school bus can get there.
Right.
And the ambulance can get there.
Right.
I mean, there are good things about this. It's not all bad.
Right. But it's very unfortunate, especially with, you know, the particular people that we're referring to who are some of the nicest people I've ever met in my life. And it, it's heartbreaking. So, I mean, if there's a way to help them, I certainly don't disagree with that. I just don't know how to speed up the process because I, I do believe it's going to be a comp plan amendment to change, to allow easements in, in those land use categories.
Yeah. Well, I think we established that it was where a fire truck could get in there. You know, was, we talked about the, the measurements and everything. We established that you could get a fire truck down in there, so.
Right.
And, and it's worked in some ways and I think there's pros and cons to just about everything.
There are.
With this one, I don't think it's all pros. There's certainly some cons to it. So I'm just trying to help these people because I feel for them.
I do too. I, I really do.
That's just how I am.
So we'll send the favor of Mr. Demp, Mr. Demp for a third.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We're going on to CTV. The Board to discuss status of San Pedro Bridge repair is intended by Commissioner Figueroa.
Yeah, we decided that we were gonna go ahead with this. I just need to know the status on it before it falls in and kills somebody.
Well, so the board executed the CEI contract a couple of meetings ago, I believe. The contractor has agreed to hold their pricing and we expect for them to commence with construction starting around the end of January. It's my understanding. It has to be, the contract has to be fully executed and the funds encumbered prior to the end of the calendar year in order to utilize our ARPA funding.
So if that's pretty firm in the January?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's now bottom of slide 17. The Board to review and consider approval of the grant pre-application package to the Federal Aviation Administration requesting funding assistance for phase one of the taxiway realignment project at the Perry Foley Airport and agenda by Melody Cox, grant driver. Melody?
Hello?
Hey, Melody.
Hello?
Hey, Melody, can you hear?
Can you hear me?
Line is clear.
You there?
Yes.
Okay. This pre-application is in the amount of $3,105,000. $2,505,000 would be FAA discretionary funding and $600,000 would be FAA entitled funding. This will be our third time to submit the pre-application. The pre-application has always been approved. We submitted the grant application two other times. We have not received funding due to a lack of funds available at FAA. We will continue to resubmit if we do not receive funding this time again because the taxiway realignment is required for acting compliance with FAA standards. I think partly why it's happening is if you're larger airports, they're receiving funding first. But obviously, we don't have $3 million running around for the taxiway realignment. We have received some funding from FDOT, but not sufficient funding to complete the project. So I just need approval for a pre-application. The actual application will be submitted in spring. If the application is approved, then we would receive funding in July 2025. There is no match required from the board.
I'm sure. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Figueroa. We got a second.
Right.
Second, my commission, Melody, out of favor.
Thank you.
I think we got CEI. The Board to consider approval of contract with Trinity Electrical Services Incorporated to complete the apron flood abiding highness project at Perry Foley Airport to the money grant driver.
The contract with Trinity is in the amount of $292,900. The project is 100% funded with two different FAA grants and one FDOT grant.
Any questions from the board? Another motion to approve. Question by Commissioner Figueroa to approve. We got a second.
Right.
Thank you by Commissioner Melody. Out of favor.
You're in the wrong bit.
We're on the item 19. The Board to review and consider approval of additional disaster assistance funding strategy recommendations for 2024, 2025 unencumbered ship funds of the Gen V grant driver.
Okay. We, we can amend our ship local housing assistance plan should we choose to. We can only use it to amend our unencumbered funds, which in July, we received our 24, 25 funding in the amount of $350,000. Normally, we have used the funds for our down payment assistance, rehab and demolition and new construction. I'm asking the board to consider using this funding in the jet disaster strategy plan to provide mortgage assistance, to provide insurance deductible payment assistance and to include rental assistance. Now, when I prepared the agenda document, we were unaware that the state is rolling out a rental assistance program for Hurricane Helene. However, I would like to include it in the plan, but not set any limits this time so we don't have to amend it again. I, I, I discussed this a couple of times with Mr. Wanda. And I think people really need our help right now, as we all know. And having the ability to provide mortgage assistance so people can hang on to their homes through a period of time or to provide assistance for people to be able to pay their insurance deductibles. We, we can either shut a limit tonight, we can set it next board meeting after we've had time to do more research, but I ask you're approval to let us at least amend the local housing assistance plan so we can provide assistance. I know that we obviously want people to build some to get it back on the factual, but I think it's really important at this time to help people hang on to what they do have. You know, having, having a place to call, call home is so important. But I ask you're consideration and, and hopefully approval to amend our housing assistance plan.
Mr. Chairperson, so I think what the board can consider, as, as Melody said, when we originally spoke about this, we did not realize the state was going to turn on their, their rental assistance program or their temporary housing program. And, and then there's the non-congregate sheltering program. So I don't, I don't know that we necessarily need to, to mimic what the state can provide, but we don't have all the facts about that program yet. We're still waiting for, for the, the state to turn it on, to make it available. So in the meantime, if you would like to amend the LHAP, that at least we get the ball rolling if you want to consider, like as Melody explained, you know, mortgage assistance or rental assistance or some, something to kind of fill in those gaps. And then if you choose to just have people go through the state for the non-congregate sheltering of what they call the direct housing program, we don't necessarily have to duplicate those efforts if, if you don't wish to and we could offer additional resources. The only downside is that if you utilize your ship funds, then that's two homes probably that won't be built. But that wouldn't happen for how long, Melody? A couple of years?
It would, it would be two to three years before the home could be built because we only have enough money in that program to do one demo and new construction. We probably don't have enough money to do two. That's why I thought that would be a good use of this unencumbered funds to help people right now. Or we could do one demo and two weekends, but that amount of money doesn't go that far right now. We have, you know, all that Adalian funds that will go towards demo and new construction and we will be getting our Hurricane Helene fund for demo and new construction, but we don't know how much. And I just thought this could be an opportunity to uphold assistance we haven't in the past, as I said, to help people get through this, to hang on to their homes and not lose our homes. If the board choose to do that, you will set the limit on the assistance that we would provide and you will set the period of time. If you say, we'll provide mortgage assistance for just three months or six months, the amount you would like to do or help people meet their insurance deductibles and you would set that amount that you would be willing to provide too. And again, our whole ship program is for very low income, low income and low to moderate income.
Do you need a motion to approve?
And you don't, you don't, just because you agree to make this amendment doesn't mean you have to do that until you choose to. I mean, but I, I want us to have the ability to do that should we choose to.
Oh, do you mind?
That all three of them, that's true.
So you just need a motion to amend it and then set those conditions?
Later.
The future date?
Yes.
And amend it upon what?
Yes, we can, we, if you, if you approve an amendment, I'll go ahead and move forward with preparing that amendment and we can get it to the state. After the amendment is approved, we can go back, you know, I can do some research for you on what other county we're doing to try to give you an idea since we've not used our money for this in the past. Plus, we're a housing house, been great. I've asked them so many questions. They sent me an application process that can streamline things. I literally draw Mr. Cheney and Mr. David Price, you know, because I was searching for the answers for us. We can go back later and set the amount you would like to spend for those strategies and set the timeline on how you would like to do it. I'm, tonight I just requested that we do amend it.
So Melody, what you, if, if this is amended tonight, then are we saying that we have to spend this money in this manner? I just?
It just gets you.
No, because you still have the ability that if you say, okay, well, we did the amendment, but they're both under program now and people don't need this assistance now, you still have the demo and deconstruction, you still have the rehab and you still have the down payment assistance in your plan. So if all those are in your plan, you can still do that. We do have the ability such that it's part of disaster recovery that we have to use certain amounts over here in the LHAP and say, I'm gonna have to do $20,000 of down payment assistance, you know, $120,000. We don't have to do a much of such an amendment either. We don't have to make that request to consider disaster assistance.
I understand.
This is only, like I said, only to allow us that option and once it is approved, the board can resist it and we can set the amount that, that you would like to do.
I understand. I just, I just know that it's, you know, if we classify this money as assistance due to disaster, so to speak, then it's a tough one just because there's, whether it's whatever class you want, class of folks, a lot of, everyone has spent a bunch of their own money during this disaster and there'd be a, why not me? You know, why not, why didn't I get some of the money? You know, I don't, I don't care what class you put them in, but it's a, you know, the, the person that may be able to afford it, they're spending unnecessary money that they felt they didn't have to spend, just like the next one. If you give it the one, then it, and there's not enough money to go help everyone in the week. It, you know, it's just a tough one. So, but I mean, I don't, I don't mind doing the amendment and, but I just, I want to look at it a lot closer before we just go, you know, go to this.
And it, and it is only for that funding year. It's only for '24, '25. It's only for, for that funding year because we can only use unencumbered funds and none of those funds were encumbered because we have just received it. So it's not like we can go back and say, okay, I mean, we've got housing applications pending right now for '23, '24 funds. We can't take from those people. We can't take. Never mind, we're not gonna do this. We, we cannot do that. It can only be unencumbered, an unencumbered year. And it just so happened, the way, you know, all this fell in line that we had just received that year.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table to make this amendment. So we'll call for a vote out of favor. Thank you, Melody.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much.
She's, we do have applications pending. They've been pending for a long time for Hurricane Adalian. Here we are about to go into 2025 and the first person has got a house or even got it started on it. We paid this company a lot of money to help us and nothing has been done. We can, I would like to agenda that for the next meeting or the workshop and talk about what in the world is going on. Nothing. So what do we have to do to get something going on? So that's what I want to agenda for the next meeting. Yeah. This is ridiculous.
Melody, do you have the status of all those applications? I know you asked for one recently and they did make a visit to the airport, correct? Last, was it last month?
That's correct. They came to the airport and helped people with their applications for two days. And, you know, I mean, you, you know, I've been on them and we just, you know, we've discussed it and we just, we, we have to, we have to move forward. And I assure you, we are working on it. I asked them to provide me with a list of all the applicants and I will have an updated list for you at the next board meeting of all the applicants that have applied. And I, I don't know what to say because we, we are concerned. And we need to, you know, we're on our second major hurricane now and we're, we're concerned. But I will provide you a list. I will, you know, participate in the workshop. And I do know, all I can say is we're, we're staying on them and.
Well, why don't I, why don't we just invite the consultants to the workshop so they can explain if there's a deficiency, if it's an issue with the application or if it's an issue with documentation or what happened after they were on site to, to help our people? I mean, rather than ask them for them.
I did contact Ms. Reynolds and asked her to, to be there, but, but. I did contact Ms. Reynolds and asked her to be there, but, you know, I know...
I'll just do that. I'll, we'll just invite them to the workshop.
We're all concerned.
Yeah, we'll just invite them to the workshop, and then they can answer for their own, for, they can, they can explain.
And again, I will, I will provide you with a list of all the applicants. I've been intending to do that anyway so that y'all can see, you know, who in your district may not apply. And so I want to get that to you, but, you know, I know we need to be moving. And I know several cases where some of the applicants are virtually on the list, and we really need to be providing them assistance.
And I'm not insinuating that anybody on our staff has not done their job. I don't believe that is the case. I, we need to be looking at this company.
Right. Thank you, Melody. All right, we'll move to item 20. The Board to continue discussion of fire rescue services given by Dave Castle.
Good evening, everybody. Director, last of the board meeting, that threw back some information with some numbers and some information so you could make better decisions and further discuss. So that is what we've done. Additionally, on top of what you have in the package, we've also provided a sheet that shows health insurance costs monthly for us and other area departments, what we could gather in that time period, at the various levels of employee only, employee child, employee spouse, and employee family, just to give you a little bit more information. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Are you talking about for insurance, or?
Well, no, just, we gave you this as you were looking at the salaries so you'd have the information of what our employees pay for insurance compared to other places as well. Just a little more information. It wasn't in the original package that I turned in for though.
And I'm glad that we, that we can provide help with the insurance for our employees. I think a lot of people probably come to work for us because of the insurance. Must not necessarily be true with firefighters, but anyway, I mean, I'm really glad that we can do that, and I really hope that we can continue to do that.
One of the things that, when we get into the more, the family plans and those, that's where we take care of all of our employees very well. The difference for us, I think, is what we're seeing is not so much with the city there, but the Jefferson County and Dixie County, it's the employee only coverage. It's the 19 and 20-year-olds that are getting out of school that don't have families yet, and they usually don't think about those benefits yet. So that's, I think that's the biggest difference. Like I said, we're really set up, once you've been here for a while, if you're getting your later twenties, thirties, and you're starting to get married, that's where, that is a very good benefit. And like I said, and not just at Fire Department, for all of the county, that our county does an amazing job, but it sits on the insurance committee meeting. I know we do a lot of...
We just need to shop for more affordable benefits, and that needs to start now, not that budget season. But what percentage of your firefighters have taken advantage of the insurance? And I'm not talking about the single coverage, but how, what percentage take advantage of the spouses and family?
I would say at least half of them are employee only. They're just younger people. They don't have, they don't have children or wives or anything.
Do you know if, and I don't know if you can answer this or not, but if, do you have any idea that if you ask a firefighter that's making almost $10,000 less than a neighbor in county, if you ask them, would they rather have a better living wage or the insurance? What do you think they would say?
I think that would greatly depend on which fireman you were asking. If you asked somebody that's in their 40s with a family, that's, you know, if that $10,000 was one or the other, you know, you're going to spend it out of the way versus if you have somebody who's in their early 20s that's on employee only coverage, they're already getting it for free. So it's not, I think that 20-year-old person would say, I'll worry about that in 10 years from now when I'm married and have kids.
The people, some of the people that I've talked to, given the choice, would rather have a better living wage. And the ones that are on the poverty level could probably go and get free insurance anyway. And we do have people, I think, that would certainly fall into the poverty level, and they're entitled to free insurance. So I think some of these people would rather have an increase in pay than insurance.
Like, we always just, like, we wanted to provide you that information, too, that just, just so everybody could see that.
Mr. Chairperson, I mean, if I could, I don't disagree with Commissioner Feigl, and I would say it just depends, all across our demographic, it depends on whom you ask. I believe when the sheriff was having similar problems recruiting deputies, that was an issue. The insurance was an issue. So if I'm not mistaken, so once we added that, you know, that demographic to our plan, he was able to recruit more effectively. But I think in Dan's department, maybe it's, it's flipped. And we do have a certain percentage, and I, is it 50% maybe, Dan, who maybe started their career here, and then, and I don't know if that's their intent, but they may travel here, or they may not live here, but they start their career here because there are fewer calls perhaps. And, and then they may wish to move on to a different department. I think, and I think that as we go through the next year, our budget workshops and our insurance committee meetings, this is going to come up time and time and time again, because what our employees want is, it's split. Some employees do work here for the insurance benefits. We have a very rich plan. The board is very, very generous. Then we have another group of employees, they want the money. And so perhaps as we go through the process, next year, we may find a way to meet people in the middle. So we have something to offer everyone, and it's more equitable. So one employee may not be receiving an $18,000 a year benefit over another. So it may level out the playing field. But all that being said, I think that the biggest issue is, you know, the possibility of having to brown out a station. And, and that's, that's, you know, that was the number one concern that Dan wanted to bring forward, and I'm certainly concerned with, is if we have to brown out a station, what our, you know, what that could look like.
And may I have a quick to end? Like, that's terrible. But just even as long as we stay, that we stay short staffed, so, like, right now, we have two firemen at Station One, one at Station Six, and one at Station Seven. So even before we get to browning out, you know, on the best-case scenario, if we have a big house fire along Woods Creek, you know, I mean, not when we had assistance from the city, but if we get further away, we have at best four firefighters in the middle of summer heat. So, you know, if we can get back to full staffing where we want to be, that one extra person makes a whole lot of difference when you're having to drag hoses in the sun all day long. So trying to prevent, you know, what we're facing, but also trying to get back to a normal status.
What is full staff for you?
Full staff. We keep a lieutenant on at Station One with two firefighters, one firefighter in Keaton Beach, and one firefighter in CN Hatchey, for a total of five all on 24/7.
And then, how many total do you have?
We have three shifts, so 15, 15 firefighters plus myself and the fire inspector that work Monday through Friday.
Now, you're, and go back to what brings this topic up again, because Chief has been coming and raising his hand. This is probably the third or fourth time the chief has probably come and raised his hand that I'm losing employees, and I'm getting down to the threshold to where we may have to brown out a station. If we brown out a station, then that hinders us from even serving the public.
Correct. And it may not be, when we say brown out, that's not, you know, no one's ever there. We may, it may go to Monday through Friday, which I think is how we started, Station Six.
Right. Right now, where one shift is below minimum staffing, so there's one shift that we're currently utilizing overtime to back if they will, because we're only the one shift down. We're the one, so we're having people that anybody wants to work overtime, that's how we're, how we're keeping, keeping open right now.
At some point, I mean, I don't know about people who are working overtime or getting overtime, but at some point, you work people to the point that you're running out, but then they end up doing something different.
And we're not making it mandatory overtime. We're opening it up, because that's, that's when I was here last time, when I said, to make it mandatory where we're just constantly, especially if we get another, or if we lose one or two more, we can't keep up with that. It can't be mandatory. Right now, because we just went below that critical threshold, we're still able to say anybody who wants to work overtime. Once they start getting, filling in too much, the, the news is going to wear off of that really quick, and they're not going to want to volunteer to work that.
Well, I mean, a lot of these guys, I mean, I know several of them probably that, not really personally, but I know that they, a lot of these guys, the way they're hours work, you know, instead of being off, they got another job or something that they're committed to. So they're having to pull back from another commitment, and they don't really want to do that for a short, short term, knowing that, hey, you're driving through the staff here, the stations, and they don't want to lose what they've already been doing and kind of their lifestyle and the way they do it.
And unfortunately, too, like I said, once we're even, even when we're, we ride pretty short for a time period, especially four or five, it's not good for the morale of the fire department where, when you're sitting that low for so long, and they start looking around, and they're like, do we need to start looking, do we need to look somewhere else? And we, we don't want, we don't want that spreading in the firehouse, because we want our people below our firemen. They work hard for us. And like I said, we wanted to say, we want to have long careers here, and want to see every last one retire from here.
You know, there's a time where people will value their time with their family and their personal time above, ahead of anything else. I've been in a position where I worked many, 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 many hours, and you get to the point that you will reach burnout. And over time, you can say, yes, you're paid overtime and you're making money, but a person shouldn't have to work themselves to death, and they shouldn't have to work to be away from their family and not to have their personal time to work overtime just to pay the light bill and just to live. So, and I know right now, our situation is, you need them to work overtime in order to have the coverage. And part of our responsibility, we're required to provide fire service. And that, to me, doesn't mean that you can close a station down, because those people that are depending on that station, if their house runs down, then where we going to be then? They're going to be in a lot more trouble then. So as we talked last time, what may be some of the answers to some of this, and instead of having people that have to work overtime just to make, even with overtime, these people don't even make what other people are making. I think it comes down to their pay. And I made, I made this spreadsheet that's just a little easier to follow. If you start over on the left-hand side, you can see the highest-paid counties, and in every category, if you look over to the right, Taylor County is the lowest by four. And we have to do something to get these people where they're making a decent living without having to work overtime to make it. Now, as I pointed out in my conclusion down here, of course, the City of Perry is our closest geographical competition. City of Perry started salary for the firefighter EMT is 53,990. Ours is 44,868, which is a difference of a little over $9,000 a year. That's a lot of money. If you did an hourly increase of $3 an hour, that would put us to be competitive with our people right next door, the City of Perry. So that would make Taylor County at 53,136 compared to the City of Perry at 53,990. That's pretty about going close there. And if you look across there, the City of Perry is the highest, and then Madison County and Dixie County. I was really surprised when I put this in a format that I could really, really compare these side by side. I was really shocked that even Jefferson County and even Waukulla County pay more than we do. That's shameful. That is shameful. But then when you get down and you look at the next line of the firefighter medics, in my opinion, it's even worse, but a $3, a $3 hour raise would just, would still leave them $6,000 less than the next lowest paid, which is Waukulla County. It's even $6,000 less than the next lowest county.
I will add, the one reason why we, we are traditionally lower on our fire medics is because Madison, Dixie's wanting all those. They run a fire rescue with an EMS-based fire rescue. So their firefighter paramedics are working a lot on the ambulance, so they're spending more of their time, and they're having to pay more because that's a, so they work a slight, their fire medics work a slightly different kind of field than we do. So it would be expected that because they're not having to work on an ambulance and run those kind of calls and as many, that we would be a little bit lower than, that would be expected to be a little bit lower.
Let's just look at the firefighter EMT then. I mean, we're at 44. The City of Perry, there's a $9,000 difference. Let's look at us to Waukulla County. We can do better than this. And if we, and just like I had talked about for several years, you know, and I know that the administration and some of us have, you know, been worried about the, what do you call it, where everybody doesn't get the same thing. And I think that that's put us really at a disadvantage because just by giving a little bit to everybody, you're never going to get these essential services up to where they should be. Everybody will get a little bit, but nobody will ever get a good living wage. So my proposal has been, all along, that you take one department and do just what we've done here. We've got some good data to compare it with, and, and bring those people up to a good living wage. Next year, you take that next department, gather the same kind of data, and see what we have to do. And eventually, everybody's going to have a good wage versus back here where we're so worried about this, whatever you call it, where everybody gets the same thing, and nobody gets very much at all. And you still keep people on the poverty level.
I just have a question for Chief Castle, just because I can't, I just can't recall. So the numbers that you provided, the starting annual salary, do all of those include overtime? Do you know?
Not, I don't believe they all do. Some of them, like, I think Dixie County included built-in overtime in their numbers.
Okay.
A lot of these, they just had to go based off of how they advertised, couldn't get hold of everybody. So some of them specified that they did built-in overtime, and just knowing Dixie County fifty years, I know that that probably includes the built-in overtime because they're on a 40-hour work week. I don't believe Swanee's was. Some are, some aren't. I don't know if they're all.
I'm not sure of it then.
No. And I don't believe the cities did either. I don't think they had built-in overtime in theirs. They just had, and they just got a 3% too.
Thank you.
I think we should have to work overtime to still make far less than other, other counties.
And some, like I said, some of that built-in overtime is the way the shifts fall, because we work a 53-hour work week. So just, the way, if you work your normal shifts, there's some overtime that's just built in just for working your shifts. So that's not necessarily working extra days. We've tried to factor in and say that there is so much, but that, they also do have what we call Kelly Days and that. So in that period where they would have an extra day in there, if it's a built-in day of overtime, they have the option to say, I'm going to take that. they have the option to say, I'm going to take that day off and not get a built-in day of overtime.
How many hours a year does that work?
We budgeted two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six.
At what rate?
At the sixteen twenty-eight did overtime add.
So you budgeted with the overtime factor in?
That's without, that's the salary without factoring in overtime.
But we do factor, you do factor overtime in.
Yeah, and you, well, the same way as in the increased amount in the first column, that's the same. We factor in so much overtime, so there's a little bit, some of that has to be factored in as built-in overtime. And then other ones as incidentals, if we have storms, or big calls, we have to call people in. So we have to factor in a certain level in.
They're still working almost seven hundred more hours a year, because I think it's either two thousand or two thousand and forty or twenty. So they're still working seven hundred extra hours a year to make this. I mean, however your shifts work out or what, but this number of twenty-seven fifty-six, that's more than the average. That's, that's extra hours, a lot of them.
The average, average forty-hour employee is twenty, twenty-eighty, I believe.
Twenty-eighty, and it's because the shifts are forty-eight ninety-six, so they work forty-eight hours straight. They work two days on, three days off, right?
But at the end of the year, they still work
They do.
Seven hundred, almost seven hundred hours more, let's not lose some of that.
No, that's why, that's why we wanted to make it clear how, how, how all of this is budgeted. So everyone understood that they work two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six hours a year, and because the hourly rate is a little confusing, just, and we wanted to be very transparent. And then we budgeted about five thousand dollars a year overtime. And so when Dan came up with the, like, for the firefighter EMT, the forty-seven eight ninety-six, that's with about half of the overtime that is budgeted, because that's not all mandatory, some of it's built in.
They're not using all their job.
Correct, so we just, so we just tried to figure about half of it.
I don't think there's any question about how it's budgeted. I think we're all very clear of how that, how that goes. The problem is that these people are paying far less than people in surrounding counties, and they work many more hours a year. And that's why, Dan, you can't keep anybody, and that's why you can't attract people that are going to stay here. They're not going to do it, they're going to, listen, they're going to Madison County and make nine thousand, almost nine thousand dollars more a year, they're going to do that.
And that's where, instead of just talking about it as the dollar, that's where I kind of wanted to show it as, how much is their, what is their annual salary? To see that kind of, you know, it's not a, is it a fifty cent difference? Is it, you know, when you do the math at the end of the road, it shows the difference of how much we make compared to everybody else, whether it's good or bad.
So would you say, Dan, your number one reason for losing employees could be for?
I know we lose, we lose a good bit of employees because they can go to other departments and make more money. I think there's a good reason why we don't get applications, is because other departments, especially because most of the people are coming from counties away. So if I'm going to, if I live three counties away, and I'm applying for jobs, if I can get a job that's only two counties away, and they're going to pay me more, I'm going to stop there, I'm not going to drive as far.
Would you think that some of the folks that end up sitting up for Taylor because there may not be an opening at one of these other places that are, that pay more money, and they just fill in the gap until one of those locations opens up?
If they came here, it's because everybody else would be full, and then, but yes, if they got a chance to go somewhere else, the chances of them staying here long-term is slim, because, especially being in FRS, Madison, Dixie, Swanee, Jefferson, you look at down that list, these are all FRS counties. So if they work here for two years, that FRS time goes with them if they go to any of these other agencies. So their retirement isn't affected if they go, if they jump around.
So you laid out some numbers here, what's your recommendation for your department?
I think cost-wise, I think if we were in the, in the, I think if we met in the middle of the two-dollar, it puts us more in line to where everybody else is.
No, it hasn't.
Well, I'm not saying that to be the top, I'm just trying to get, and I, I'm not, I don't want to be greedy here.
Three dollars, if you look at even at three dollars, that's still going to put us less. I mean, you should be taking up for your guys that are working for you, Dan.
Oh, I, that's why I'm here in the first place, man, but I'm excited.
Say them all that you can.
But on the top one, I'm also, I'm adding it as the department head, and if the first one, the annual cost by increase, I'm also trying to balance that out by the impact on the county as well. That's in a perfect world, I would love to see it's all good, yeah, a very, very, very sizable increase, but also being a responsible department head, I got to look at that total in that top column there. Trying to be responsible for that too, and knowing that we have, we're going to have to come up with money this year, which, did we ever look at that before?
Uh, I have the amount that's in reserves.
Your statement is that if the starting salary was closer to basically fifty thousand dollars, then that would be a reasonable base rate, is that?
Compared to our area, when you look at the salaries of everyone else, I think it's more in the mid-range of the rest of, the rest of the county.
So if I'm looking at this insurance cost, in the City of Perry, it's just for the employee only a hundred and sixty dollars a month, correct? Help me make sure I'm all right with my math, but my math says that's nineteen hundred dollars basically annually. That a city firefighter, if they're opting into the city's insurance plan, is really reducing their salary. Is that, is that believable math?
And that's where, like I said, with my suggestion at two dollars would be, it would offset, kind of start offsetting that difference, where I'm not trying to have our insurance costs the same as, or better than theirs and their hourly rate. I would, like I said, with us being in the middle of the salary range, if you look at their employee-only cost for their insurance, that puts them, like I said, it's around two thousand dollars or two to three thousand dollars. If they're currently about, right around fifty-four thousand dollars, that puts us more, more at an even.
Well, I think it may be putting you to an advantage for folks that are taking the insurance seriously, because Taylor County has no cost.
Being an advantage to the people that we're trying to compete against either.
Mr. Chairperson.
Well, let's talk a few minutes about some of these comparisons, because if I look at all these counties, I believe the majority, if not all of these counties, have a higher mileage rate than Taylor County has. And some of these are actually maxed out, they're already to the top. We're at seven point two.
Madison County is.
I believe Madison and Dixie, I'm certain of, and I believe a number of these others are. But I'm, what I'm fairly confident is that seven point two is less than each of these counties. And further than that, I believe the majority of these counties also have a fire assessment. Are you familiar?
Yes, I am, and we've tried a fire assessment.
I'm not suggesting assessment, I'm an authority assessment, I'm just making a factual observation that our county has a lower mileage rate without a fire assessment currently. And these counties, I believe, I won't say they all are, but I believe the majority of these counties, given their fiscal position, are capping out on their mileage and are currently assessing for fire services. And I may be wrong about that, but what I'm, what I'm saying there is, because of their position and their requirement, their taxpayers are footing the bill at a different level than what we currently experience here. So my objective, if there's a way that we can get to that, is to not trigger a fire assessment primarily, nor should, nor increase the mileage rate if it's within reach. But what I want to understand from our clerk, if I could, if we were to agree at two dollars a dollar for our firefighters, how much in addition to would that be annually?
That's, uh...
Hundred forty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, one forty-five seven oh one.
Okay. But that's not figuring any other departments except for our fire service, correct?
Is that putting overtime in at two for that extra two dollars?
I'm not certain.
Yes.
There's going to be one of them.
Yeah, it's in there.
I agree.
It is in there.
All costs and all costs that can be associated. And we've get that raised, we broke that information down from a dollar all the way up to the three seventy-two for a twenty-dollar that was discussed at the last meeting, so that information is all been provided.
Mr. Chairperson, if I could just point something out. The current insurance benefits, I think we all need to realize, may not be next year's insurance benefits. I think we're going to have to look at our plan, and there will be a question if we can, if the board can continue to fund the current plan at that rate, or what we're going to be able to do. So I think that we need to consider that whatever our health insurance benefits are today may not be our health benefits, health insurance benefits moving forward. Would you agree, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, so we've been working with the insurance to provide some options, some different options there. So they'll be bringing that to you soon, so, so there's, you know, we do have some opportunities to change that, if the board wishes to do so. I would, I would think a hundred and forty-five thousand, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I would think that would probably be in the, in the U fund, but it would be close to a half a mil, I would think.
Probably.
Mr. Chair.
Increase.
You know, just because some of the neighboring counties are at ten mils doesn't justify and make me feel all warm and fuzzy that that's the reason that we're not doing the right thing for people that are not making a living wage. That doesn't give me a lot of good feelings about that, so I can't, I can't go there with that. And it just really amazes me that, that we always go to raising taxes or cutting essential services when it comes to something like this. Instead of looking at, at more affordable benefits and looking at cutting spending, we don't go to the obvious, we want to go to the most sensational thing that says, oh, oh, then we're going to have to raise taxes, and we're going to have to cut out our police and fire, and that's not it. We need to stop spending and look at more affordable benefits. But, and it feels kind of odd to me, very odd to me, that I'm sitting here and I am advocating for and trying to get your employees a fair living wage more than you are. That's kind of a, a different, that's different for me, that I'm trying to get your employees more than you are. Just an observation.
I'm not opposed to more, I'm just...
I would imagine the chief would probably take five dollars if he thought it was feasible. And he's been here numerous times, so I wouldn't think that'd be a fair statement to the chief to think that he's not working his butt off for it.
I'm just telling you what I'd be doing, I'd be trying to get my people every time I could, but I understand, I, I, I hear you, I hear you.
Let me say something. I don't know if y'all been getting phone calls from other department's employees or not, but I've had calls from other departments, and if they don't get some money along with the firefighters, we're going to have an issue, I can tell you. I mean, it's going to be a problem, and we are going to have, like I said in the last meeting, if we talked about this, if we're going to give a raise, we need to give it to everybody. We don't need to be giving it just to one group and then say, well, maybe next year. You know, good will fam, next year, we're going to be shorter than we are now. So we ain't going to be able to give no two or three dollars an hour to another department next year, unless some miracle falls on them.
I'm looking at essential services, that's not looking at fire, I'm not looking at, we can do without some roads, but we cannot do without a fire department.
You cannot do without, with, without motor grader operators, you cannot do without CDL drivers. You can't haul the trash without CDL driver, you got to have people qualified for things too. They didn't just get off the bus, they went to class and got certified. And then a motor grader operator, he, it takes him a long time to qualify, to do it right, do it the right way.
They're stuck there long enough, because they're on the poverty level too.
Yeah, but here's the thing, we're in a financial situation coming for this coming year. Everybody, any configure, noted it, it's not going to be the same twelve months from now when we're sitting here. And we're going to have to, I'm fine with giving all of our employees a dollar raise instead of that fifty cent, and doing that, if, I mean, if they can't take that, I mean, they need to find something else too. But I'm talking about employees calling me and saying, Jim, we're going to have a problem. And some of them even threatening to quit if they get to a three-dollar an hour, and they don't get to a three-dollar an hour, but they satisfied with a dollar.
But how does that, and I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but how does that resolve the problem that we're about to have to close a fire station because we don't have enough firefighters? How does that, by giving everybody just one dollar, because you've got some people that call you up and they're complaining, and they've called me too, and I understand. If we'd have started this two, three years ago, you weren't the way I'm wanting to, by this year, these people would have been made whole. But no, we wanted to give everybody the same thing. So here we are, it's going to come back and bite us, I'm telling you, it's going to come back and bite us. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Chairperson, if I, if I could, I think that, I understand that we have some critical budget issues that we're going to have to resolve very quickly. And I don't know, no matter what the board does tonight, our current, I would say our current funding is not going to be adequate next year. So if you choose to fund the firefighters at a higher hourly rate to stabilize that department, that would, that would at least accomplish that. Now, if you choose to give all employees, you know, the other fifty cents or whatever you would like to do, but I would, I would like to stabilize the fire department, because if you're talking about Station Six, that's, that's a pretty, I mean, that's a populated area, and the fire station not only offers, I mean, their first response, they put out fires, and logistically, they are one of the, it takes, it's one of the longest response times. If, if nobody was manning that station, how long would it take either the steam hatchet truck or the in-town truck to get to Station Six territory?
And where is twenty-five thousand dollars?
Right, so, and I, I understand it's not sustainable. I mean, obviously, it's not sustainable, and we're going to have to take a very hard look at the services that we do provide, in my opinion. Just when you look at the loss of revenue at the coast, and you look at the loss of revenue from the mill closures, everything, a lot of things are going to change next year. But I, and I would like to give all employees something, but I do feel like we need to stabilize the fire department, one way or another. And that's, I just hate to run out a station. And that's the whole reason we brought it to you, and it's difficult for us to advocate one department over another. That's just, that's difficult. But I do feel like we need to try to do something to stabilize the department one way or another.
I've seen this department standing in front of this podium, raising its hand numerous times. I've not seen other departments raising their hand numerous times like this guy.
Well, but I will say, in all fairness, that other departments, we've had to limp along. We've had shortages in other departments, it may just not have as critical an effect. And the whole reason that, you know, we wanted you to look at the health insurance was not to, you know, that's just a snapshot in time, but I would fully expect some of those benefits to change next year as well. We have to, we were going to have to make some changes. But I think the question is, okay, is there, is there any, what can we do to stabilize the department and, and then come up with a solution for all departments and all operations that's sustainable? And that... And that is not going to be resolved tonight, I don't believe. Do you, Gary? I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a huge task.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, if you're talking about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the MSTU fund and bring everybody up two dollars, I mean, that, you're gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars short just starting next year.
Right.
So.
We'll have to cut out something else that's non-essential.
Yeah.
And there's, I mean, MSTU is.
You have about twenty-seven surplus in there this year.
Right.
If you go to a hundred and forty-five, then you'll be about a hundred and twenty short right, right to begin with.
Right, so you'll have to balance with reserve, I mean, we would have to take it out of reserves.
They'll have to come out, if you did it this year, it's not gonna come out of reserves this year and then, you know, you'd have to figure out how to make it balance next year.
Right. And that would be, I mean, that may be the case across several funds. If you want, if you wish to consider raising other employees' salaries, there's not adequate revenue in some of those funds either, so you would have to balance with reserves in the other funds.
I'm not for that until we have cut spending. And there's a lot of ways that we could cut spending and we could, we could shop for more affordable things, benefits and other things. But why would you go in and spend your reserves without first making your budget very lean and cut out what we can do without? That's what we should be doing, that's, that's, that's good business there. I know at home, I don't run to my savings account, cut out something. I cut out something, I keep that because I may need that one day. This right here, I can cut this out or cut back on this. And that's what government should be trying to do.
We just wanted to present the data to you so you could go into it eyes wide open. And, and again, we did not realize until after the budgeting process that we were facing the, this critical shortage. We, I think it was two years ago, we were actually, our salary was much more competitive, but. Yeah, and then after that, we were able to stabilize again. I mean, the board has given three dollars an hour in, in raises and also given incentives. You've been very, very generous. We just can't keep up with other departments because they're, right then, I mean, they're, they're outpacing us.
Yes, and that's like I said, and last time I was here, or two weeks ago, it was the same thing. I said, it's, it's not that the board hasn't done for the fire department, you know, nobody's saying that. It's just, like you said, it's other, the other departments in our area are outpacing us and they're just, they're, they're fighting, they're fighting, fighting a battle for the same people that we're trying to get. And I said, it's just that they, they've just outpaced us.
And we're just losing, we're losing. I would like to see us give a three-dollar, a three-dollar an hour raise to these firefighters, both the firefighter EMT and the firefighter medics. That's still gonna be below, we're still gonna be below, but we won't be the lowest. So maybe that would give us some advantage, that these people would be more interested in applying for a job and stay. And especially if we, even if we have to cut the insurance benefits, if we can still provide something there to keep these people here, because we have to have firefighters.
So my question is, if you cut those insurance benefits, you're cutting those salaries because those folks that have families and, and they're, they're gonna carry insurance are still gonna have those same expenses. So it's just moving numbers from one category to another one. When we're at a place currently, I don't know what the, the insurance committee brings this year. I have no idea what that's gonna be. I could, you know, speculate that it's likely to be, uh, you know, differences in costs and coverages. I think that's typical and I think that's a consideration for that point in time. But for us just to say, we're gonna do X amount of dollars and cut benefits, I think, I think you're still cutting salaries. Because that same amount of funding is still gonna come out of the salary, whatever that amount is. That employee's still paying that. It just depends on how far that salary's gonna go. So what I'm, what I'm still looking at is the turnover in all our departments, whether it's law enforcement or public works or the fire department, is at a, at a higher rate. I'm not saying that we have to accept that. I'm saying, given an understanding what that rate looks like, that for me, it makes a more practical decision of keeping all those things balanced and not fractured. And that's, that's where I'm at, and that's where I'm still at. I've heard from those employees and they're quite disappointed. And, and I can't say that any, this kind of reaction at this one department level isn't gonna cause a chain reaction across all our other departments, as a matter of fact. I was told pretty clearly that's gonna be a, not just a consideration, but an occurrence. So those are the things that I'm looking at. As far as not having roads or not working roads, if you don't have roads, then your time, if you don't have roads that are accessible, your time's gonna be affected. If you can't get there at all, what else does that do? So it's not to say that it's just one department over another, but understanding of all the department's experiences through the, the last hurricane and the elements in which they worked through and the ways that they performed, I, I just can't of a good conscience only consider one department.
Mr. Chair. There are, we have employees that their spouses work and their spouses are offered insurance where they work. Now, I know there are some companies that if your spouse works and is offered insurance, then we're not, they have to take that and we should follow the same thing. If you have a spouse that's offered insurance, they need to take that insurance. Because, I mean, they're gonna, what they're gonna do is say, oh, we can get it through the county cheaper. If we're gonna look after our bottom line, if your spouse has insurance, then they should be able to, they should have to, to, to take that insurance. That's the way it was at the mill and it worked. I know when I worked at the hospital and he worked at the mill, I had to take the hospital insurance because that might dance. And so that way, if we, you know, that would help out from what Commissioner Newman is saying. I think that would help that, that bottom line.
Let me say something. I've been listening, I've been hearing pros and cons. This poverty level, I think this county is probably, for thirty-seven thousand dollars average, you're talking about four to four. It costs everybody the same thing to go to the grocery store and get the same thing. If you go buy a loaf of bread, buy a piece of meat, all that is the same. Now, I, I do feel for the firefighters. I know when they're working or when they're on the own job, they might not be working, they might be sitting up sleeping or washing the truck or whatever. But at this particular point in our life and what I see coming down the pipe, it ain't pretty. And I don't know if I'd be willing to vote for anybody to get anything, even for myself. It just, I mean, what I see and what have happened in the last thirteen months? Even though if a person leaves, another one would be definitely coming. Always did. I, I, let, let, I ain't to get you, but let me tell you something. I applaud you for your effort and I applaud kind of ministers trying to come to us and get as much as they possibly can. Now Pam, my hat's off to her, she's a fighter. Good God, she's been jumping. But we got to stop somewhere down the line and stay steady in the boat. I don't think right now is the time to be getting two dollars. In the last meeting I did come, said, well, I'd give, go two dollars. Yeah, we had seventeen people, we paid them two dollars an hour more, that was more than, than I. I, I really went out on a limb. But when I got to thinking about it, I don't know how many people you got working. We can only give fifty cent an hour and that's what we're gonna stick with unless we raise anybody a dollar more. I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna raise anybody. I mean, it just don't make sense to do it right now.
What we gonna do when we close the fire station down there? What we gonna do when somebody's house burns up, my big old neighborhood?
Well, the city, the city is gonna react to a fire. If we can't, if he can't cover it, the city's gonna go to it, right?
We're gonna go to the beach?
We have an agreement that they come out five miles from the city.
Right. Well, there's a lot of folks here in five-mile ranges here that you're talking about, that the city's gonna help you. I, I used to, I had friends that was working at the city fire station for years and I was running with them and they, they was, I was sitting over one evening and they had a fire in the county that was a real bad fire and the city went and helped them. I said, I know they do help them, they, you know. So, I mean, it's, it's a, you've gonna have, you, you've done it before and you know they're gonna, they're gonna help you if you call them.
But Jim, if they have to go to the beach, the house is gonna be burnt down.
Dean Hatchey and Perry can get there.
And then be burnt down, but that's okay. I mean, we have to take responsibility for that when it happens. You know, and that'll be on, that'll be on us.
I remember when they, if something got lit at the beach, it burned down anyway. They didn't even have a fire truck down there. Then we got volunteer fire trucks finally and they did save a few houses. But, I mean, you got volunteers now. I mean, some and not many, but you do have volunteers, you know.
And again, just, it wa, eyes wide open. It's the response time for, for medical emergencies as well. Because in that area, and I'm, and I'm very torn over this, this is very difficult. But the reality of it is, and, and we just want y'all to understand, in that area in particular, it, it's going to take anybody twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes to get there. And, and if we have to brown out a station and that's what we have to do, whether it be now or it be next year or whatever we have to do to make sure that we can offer essential services, then that, we'll face that. But with it being an immediate concern, we just want every, even if the city helps us, it's still a long response time. And, and that's what we wanted to impress upon y'all, is that, you know, whichever way you go, it's that response time that concerns us.
And if you have someone having a stroke, a heart attack or if they're in trauma, okay, if they've been in an accident and they've lost a limb, I don't wanna wait for Perry to get there. I don't wanna wait for Steam Hatchet to get there. Not only for me, but for anybody. Time is of the essence in saving a life. You can build your house back maybe, but you sure can't replace a life.
I think we've pretty good enough what's gonna happen, how this is gonna go. And I would, I know you mentioned two dollars, you might have mentioned three dollars. I would recommend a dollar fifty, I mean, uh, on this action. And then, of course, we're gonna look at, again, we're gonna look at all employees in the next budget session. So if they were given a dollar fifty and then we ended up giving another dollar in July for the next budget, then, of course, they ended up with two dollars and fifty cents on the fire station. And then, of course, you do got a, a recruiting plan that, that hopefully that will even help too to, to bring on more local type folks, so, uh, and be able to retain them and not just get them temporary. So, but anyway, I think.
Would you live with two dollars?
I could, I mean.
I could go down from three, you could go up to two, and if he's for two.
Well, I get it, but I just, I think at the, at the, the wheel of what I'm hearing from the board, I mean, there's just, there's nothing. I mean, if I were to.
Just drop it and when we close our fire station, if somebody loses their life or whatever, we're gonna be responsible, our conscience is gonna be clear. But we'll be sued and we have to live with that decision.
Commissioner, I think you and I are the same wavelength that we understand that something needs to be done. And, you know, when somebody calls me, they got three of them they can call that said not to do it.
That's exactly right.
But.
I'm not gonna have that blood on my hands.
But anyway, um.
So just to, if I, if I may, um, a dollar fifty annual cost would be an additional hundred and nine thousand dollars.
That's right. But anyway, I don't appreciate you.
Sorry, y'all don't get anything, maybe fifty cents.
Appreciate you coming, Chief. Thank you, how are you doing? All right, we'll move on to County Administrator Adam, Adam twenty-eight. The court, the law to discuss agreement for DR Nash, four seven three, for public assistance belonging to the Florida Department of Fire Management, presented by the County Administrator.
So this is just for you to consider. I am not necessarily recommending this, but wanted to bring it to y'all. I wanted, I wanna lead off with that. So this is an effort by the state and, and I appreciate very much the, the offering. What they are offering to do is to basically loan us one point one million dollars to act as a, a bridge, to bridge the gap of the FEMA claims that we have not been reimbursed for. However, I think it makes myself and the clerk and the finance director and probably our attorney a little anxious because if we accept this money, number one, it has to be put in a separate interest-bearing account and if we, and then we'll have to pay back whatever we, FEMA does not reimburse us for. And I will say, the whole experience through it is painful as far as the FEMA claims. It has taken up an incredible amount of time by our finance director, Marcia. I'm, I'm the last one, I don't spend as much time. But we have spent a lot of time vetting these FEMA claims and we don't know exactly what we'll get reimbursed for. So I, I do appreciate the offer from the state, but in good conscience, conscience, I would say, I don't necessarily recommend it. We have, I think we could continue to work with FEMA to try to get our reimbursement. I think we're making some progress and rather than risk, you know, repayment, maybe we should just wait to see how these FEMA claims settle out. Do you agree?
We don't need to go into debt.
Right. Do you agree, Gary?
Okay.
I didn't like her, I said, I don't know, I'm looking for a lot, I didn't wanna give it all.
I don't think that's the way this works. I, I don't know if there are any questions and I didn't wanna preempt any conversation, but I did wanna lead off that.
I don't, I don't agree, I don't think.
I didn't like the agreement.
No, sir, he did not like the agreement, I couldn't say that.
If you're going broke, you know, an agreement you make don't feel all right, you do nothing but.
I don't think that's the way that works either.
Oh, yeah.
See, what can happen though is, you know, you don't pay it back and they cut your revenue share and so you're.
I do appreciate the effort, I really do, and I think it was meant, um.
It means, it means well, but then again, you, you look at their agreement. It's, uh. I don't like how to say, I didn't write out woo-hoo.
All right, we're down to twenty-one, County Administrator, discuss informational items.
So I did wanna update the board. Our recycle building, where we process all of our recyclables, obviously, was damaged pretty substantially with Helene. There was some damage during Adalia, but Helene has done a substantial amount of damage to that building. We are not able to even safely work in that building right now. So we have had to suspend for now our recycle operations except for metal and appliances. But as far as, you know, our cardboard and our plastic, we are on hold now until we can try to figure out another solution, which we will be working on. We've reached out to a contact to see if there's just another mechanism. Until we get the adjustment report and we know exactly what's entailed in repairing that building, I don't wanna pause recycle operations indefinitely, obviously. So we are seeking solutions. I really just wanted to bring it to your attention. I don't even, we have not received the report yet that we should, aren't you thinking about a week? Maybe we'll get, maybe we're there today. Right, so I'll have a better idea of where we stand. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, if you hear anything. We're kind of on pause right now with cardboard and bottles. We don't even have, we don't even have anywhere to store it because of the roof damage and the, the damage to the sides of the building.
Where is this building at?
It's out near that old landfill.
About a prison, down that way, about a prison. Yeah, but this is. Yeah, well, this is, been in pretty bad shape prior to the storm.
So, I think the two buildings that probably, the two buildings that got the worst hit from Helene is the courthouse roof had some damage and that's probably going to have to be replaced, and the recycle building. Obviously, our parks on the south end were hit pretty hard. But I should have, I'll have more information by the next board meeting as far as exactly what we're looking at. But some of those parks will have to be substantially rebuilt, unfortunately. So, we are planning to go to Hodges Park this week and maybe next to try to clean up what's left of it so at least we can open that area. People can still take their lawn chairs and once we clean it all up, we have a slab. We may have a picnic table left. I don't want to leave that park closed indefinitely because I want people to enjoy. I mean, it's still a beautiful spot. But we are going to, we did start our hurricane cleanup crew and we will start cleaning that spot up this week, hopefully, maybe next week. We have a lot of moving pieces and parts right now.
There's, there's a lot of concrete slabs down there people can sit on.
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, and that's, I hate to have it closed.
I'm just being.
Oh, you mean just in general, guess me? I mean, but, I mean, people can enjoy the water. I just want to make sure we go through and get everything we can out of the sand and just make it safe. It is, we do have lines up now that it's closed, but we will be working to try to make that open to the public. Of course, the postal park had a lot of damage and that's, but that area is being used for the point of distribution right now. So, we're putting that to the side and we'll, we'll focus on Hodges Park. In partnership with DOT, Department of Corrections, almost all of our county properties, the trees have been trimmed, they're going to go through and start picking up the vegetative debris. This has saved us an incredible amount of money and a lot of our time as far as documentation and filing for FEMA reimbursement and all that. So, I'm very, very grateful for that partnership, they have been a huge help. Also, my last item. We are planning, unless the board has different directions to move forward with our Veterans Day luncheon. Marcia reminded me that, I don't know what happened to October, but October's almost gone. So, this is on November eleventh, okay, which is on a Monday, unless the board does not wish to hold the luncheon. But by that time, the, it will not be, that building will not be used as a shelter any longer. So, we can move forward unless you, you wish to not.
How is it funded?
So, we have it, it's in our budget, so we do budget for that. And that's typically, I mean, we should have enough to have our luncheon and we have decorations that we reuse from year to year. Typically, the chamber helps us with the entertainment and they fund that. And I will reach out to Dawn and ask her if they can fund it this year. But, and Marcia does a lot of hard work on that luncheon.
I think the majority of the cost is the deed.
Yeah, I wonder if, if you reached out, went to NAMO or NAMO or whatever they're called, if they might be interested since they're in the.
That's possible, but I can actually mention that, well, I'll reach out to NAMO, that's a good idea. Because typically, in the past, GP would help us with that. So, I can reach out to some of the other entities.
I was thinking Duke's and Mr. Mixon was very familiar with the.
That's a good idea too. We can reach out to NAMO and to Duke.
How about Big Talk?
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Want to keep comments and concerns for non-adjourned items. Item twenty-three, board informational items, Commissioner Piggle.
Yeah. I just would like to know what the status on dead man's curb is. I lost my mother, my aunt there in old wine. And that's been, what, twenty-three years ago? And I've been trying for twenty-three years to get that dead man's curb, something done to it. We involved the property adjacent to it several years ago. And where are we, what's going on?
Well, I think we were just waiting for that to be funded and I think it's scheduled for this year.
Quarter twenty-five.
Right. It's, it's scheduled to be funded for this year.
For twenty-twenty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
After the purchase, we were told that Florida DOT will meet the cost for its research.
Yeah, well, we met with them ten or more years ago, right here, I did, and whoever the county was then. And they told us right then that they would fund it. And so, it's, it's took a long time.
I think the property closing was just last year?
I can't, last year or a year before, but we knew, I mean, they had.
Not ten years, I'm just saying.
It's been a long time.
But I'm most certain I saw that on the annual plan, that this first quarter of twenty-five was what my recollection is.
Well, I, I hope so, I hope that happens. And I've had quite a few calls from these captains in Steenhatchie. And as we're all aware, they're not working and they've got the out-of-town people in to work. And as of yesterday, I haven't spoken with anybody today, but as of last night, they said that they still, lots of them that were not working. Unless they've been put on today. And I know I talked with Jason Schoeff last year, last week. He was gonna try to do something about it, that was the first of the week, I contacted him throughout the week. And as of last night, we still have our people that are not working, that desperately need to work, and we've got out-of-town people making all the money.
I don't believe that's, I, I think there's been some updates since then. But what I was told yesterday was that there were a number of local captains who were on standby, which means they're, they're supposed to be collecting standby pay, which is four hundred dollars a day to be on standby. And the process is, is that Florida Department of Emergency Management has to enter these, these work orders and it has to go through a process. And as these areas open up, then the captains can go to work. Now, the last time I checked, and I'm trying to, I did not get a list, but I thought I was told that there were somewhere between fifteen and twenty local captains on standby pay. I have not received a list yet and they are just waiting to go to work. So, they may start in Jasper or Live Oak or someplace like that. But then the hope is as, you know, if things progress, that, you know, at least they're close to home. And I was also told that they are paid mileage. Now, I, I'm still trying to work through some of the details with the spokesperson, I'll say, for the group. But as.
I threw the information through the contract.
Well, I wanted to verify it with, with a local captain. I know what I was told by the contractor, I wanted to verify it with the captain. But as of last night, from what I understand, people were much happier because they knew they would be going to work. Now, I haven't gotten an answer today, I did ask that question. But as of yesterday, there were two out-of-town captains and the hope was that as they brought captains on and got them off standby, that they would go to an out-of-town area and our local captains could stay local.
Who's telling you that, Lilwanda, who's telling you that?
The CEO of the company.
Okay, because the actual people are telling me something different. I know when you and I talked on Friday, you said everybody had been hired except for one and he was in Jasper. And these people are telling me that is not true. They are not working. And they've turned their application in and they feel like that, they're saying, okay, we've got your application, but yet they still are hiring, they've hired these people from out of town over our people. How does that happen, I wonder?
Well, they have control over who they can hire.
The whole project is funded by the state, right? The state, the state funds it and they hire contractors, A, B, and C big companies and then they subcontract, these other are mistake. Gonna hire these people, they can't go and say, hey, you gonna hire them, they can recommend it. And we can all shake our head, nod our heads and say, hey, you need to be hiring our local people. We know that's what should happen. If it was us hiring these people that the state or, we could hold the labor deal and say, well, if you're not gonna hire our local people, we'll go find somebody else that will hire our local people. We can't run and say, the state of Florida won't do it, we're gonna get Colorado or somebody to do it. That's not how it works.
Yeah, and I, I, I know what's going on. I just don't understand it. If our people that represent us in Tallahassee, whoever it is.
Indeed, you can't.
They, if they cannot help us local people, they need to be replaced.
Yeah.
I'll say this, them people that've been working, I've talked to them, you probably have all probably talked to them.
But let me say, when you call even as someone wanting to do, get you to do, wanting a contract to do work, you best steer away from the threats. Because if I've got somebody wanting to go to work for me and wanting a contract with me and I get threatened, do you think I'm gonna hire them?
You think that's the case?
Oh, I know and some of it has been.
Well, I just say, in this condition, our state representatives have been absolutely diligently working with this contractor to try to help the situation. I think some of the confusion is because some of these folks may be on the standby pay but aren't aware and can't confirm if they are or they are not. That doesn't mean they're not employed or they're not going to be working. It means that while that transition period is going on and more work is being released, in some cases, an adjacent county, that the contractor is, is working and our representatives are working and our local staff is also working so that we come to the same place where our local captains are able to work locally in the debris removal. And so, I mean, I don't believe this in how it's on our state partner's fault. I've certainly been speaking with our county staff to understand that. And I'm not glad that we have folks that are having to travel. But given the understanding of how many jobs or projects have opened and that these summer folks are either on standby or are actively working, I think we're headed in the right direction. But surely, I don't think the threats are going to be successful.
I think what I'm trying to say is this, the people in Tallahassee, it seems like to me that they could, when they gather, that they could do something that would require that local people be hired first. And if that's, if that's in the laws, then that might help this situation. I know that, that Jason Schoeff or nobody can go to this ABC company or whoever they are and say, you've got to do this. But if they do something in Tallahassee to help ensure that our local people are given priority, then that's what needs to happen. That's probably what we should be talking to them about for any future and there'll be another one, I'll bet you. So.
They should probably learn in curbs in every event.
I just want to see our local people that need these jobs realizing that that they're given priority over somebody from down the south. That just doesn't feel right.
I agree with you.
So, anyway, um.
You wanna cut me off?
Uh-huh. What'd you say?
You wanna cut me off?
Okay, so you know, we were talking a while ago, you said you don't want to give anybody anything. Are we still giving everybody fifty cent or you, you want us to give that up too?
Oh, I don't want to give it up. Yeah, that's just.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Dan.
We've had so much up here tonight, so much to take in. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let it slide. My hat's off to everybody who's working and I know feelings and emotions we get involved in all this stuff trying to do and satisfy. We just have to do the best we can with what we got to do it with, okay? That's it.
All right, Mr. Dan, Joshua, Mr. Pedy.
I want to say the people are real proud of the mosquitoes praying. Mosquitoes is.
Oh, yeah.
Mosquitoes is not nearly as bad as it were. And they didn't, some areas, they still got mosquitoes, but they, I don't know, I didn't spray them in those areas. But I talked to one man, he was complaining about mosquitoes and he called me back and said, I heard that plane last night and I went up, he said, I went up there tonight and he said, there wasn't mosquito in my yard. And he, they worked. It worked. And I'm proud of, of the state getting that done for us.
Very good.
That's all I got.
All right, well, there's nothing else, want to add an motion to adjourn? Take it. Take it, take it. Take it on the paper.
Twenty-nine.
What's that?
What's that?
Blind muted.